All right, you guys all set? All right, good evening. This is the November 25th, 2013 Rhinebeck Town Board meeting, and we'll begin with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, and for our better and the greater good of this world.
We have no announcements on here, however, center class will be beginning shortly after Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is Thursday, and we wish everybody a pleasant Thanksgiving. Anybody have any announcements to make? Let me just say that my 10-year-old made this picture when she was four, and it's been in my office ever since I took office, but I never had it out publicly, so I want to give her the benefit and myself the benefit of showing off her painting from when she was four years old. What has been here for six years?
Senator Soberdies.
Sorry?
Senator Soberdies.
Yes. I read that off. Not eBay, Soberdies, right? Okay. Any announcements from the public? Just one more thing is to remind you that the regular STAR program, you have to reapply for STAR now. Ordinarily, in the past, it was automatic, but if you have basic STAR, you have to make contact by email or call the state to reapply for that. Otherwise, you'll miss out for next year's tax benefits if you don't do it by the end of the year, so. Okay, so.
Mayor?
Sure. Mayor?
Jim Reardon, Mayor of the Village of Rhinebeck. Just want to share some information with everybody. The Chamber of Commerce will be having their annual tree lighting ceremony this coming weekend. That's on Sunday, savings bank plaza. The tree lighting usually occurs around 5:30. And as Tom mentioned, center class is coming up the following weekend on December 7th. There has been a change in the function of the program from what was previously agreed upon. We were going to close East Market Street at about 10:30 in the morning, and there wouldn't be any parking, but we have modified that. They are not going to have any street performers, those types of things, on East Market Street this year, so there will be no parking on East Market Street from 3:00 PM on Saturday, December 7th. We will be putting signs up to that effect, and I will also be doing a press release to the media to make people aware. So, December 7th, 3:00 PM on, no parking on East Market Street, from Center Street to the red light every night. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Okay. So moving forward, we have the approval of the minutes from the prior meeting of November 12th. Is there a motion and second to approve the minutes?
Motion, second.
Any discussion on them? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item E is a public hearing for local law, you know, blank for 2013. This is for the establishment of the office of a single-appointed assessor pursuant to real property tax law, section 328. So, we have before us the concept to move from a three-member elected assessor's office to a single-appointed member assessor's office. And that was brought up by some members of the board, and that is on the floor for a public hearing at this time. Anybody want to, before we do that, any board members want to have any input for this? All right. So, we'll open the floor for any public comments on this. Mayor?
Jim Reardon, Mayor of the Village of Rhinebeck. I'd like to thank Supervisor Trout and the rest of the board for having this public hearing. One thing I would like to say is that, you know, I feel that the public notification part of this has been kind of short. We just found out about it a week or so ago. And I'm unclear as to the motivation for this, and I think a lot of people are, so my idea is to come here tonight just to try and gather some information, so that perhaps we can share it with the public a little bit more, and everybody has a clear picture of what's going on here. You know, as a village mayor and my board as trustees, we are all committed to looking at our operations continually, figuring out better ways to do it. And I'm sure that that's the motivation behind this move on the town board's part. However, because we have not received any information, we really don't know for a fact what the motivation is. So, my first question would be, why this move? Couple other questions I would have is Gina Fox, I guess, had taken umbrage with the information I put out to the public and had mentioned in her response to me about best practices. So, if you could share with people what the best practices are that are being, trying to be achieved, that would be very helpful. And I also would question, why the change from an elected position to an appointed position? I understand maybe if there's an effort to save some money, that you may downsize the number of assessors, but is this going from three part-time people and then going to one person that then is going to be full-time? And if so, what are the cost factors that are going to be incurred because of that? Are there going to be benefits that have to be paid? Those types of things. And that information, again, is not out there, so nobody's really aware. And then, I guess, the last question I have, what happens in the case where, right now, we have three elected assessors? Emory Ruger, Bill McGann, and Charlie Wiles? The public voted for these people and put them into office. Does the town board have the authority now to say to these gentlemen, you no longer have a position, and you don't hold an office any longer? And they go ahead and appoint somebody to that position? So, those are some of the general questions I have that I formulated this afternoon. I really would appreciate you considering those. I would really appreciate you adjourning this public hearing this evening, and certainly answering some of these questions, and then giving the public more opportunity to come here and comment. Thank you.
It's a public hearing, but I do want to make a comment that this is a shared service with the village, so it's appropriate that the mayor's up here to ask these questions, so. I can't address those questions right now.
I understand.
I don't have the answers for them, anyway. And I don't support the movement, anyway, so. But anyways, any further comments?
What effect would this have?
I just, for the benefit of the cameras, I'd like to... No, you can come up here, Spiro.
I can, I can.
Okay, no, I mean, we need you on the microphone, that's all. Just for the benefit of the camera.
What effect would this have on the grievance process, if any? I mean, I have been involved in that before, and it seems to me that it can be a collaborative process, and I think it's important that that avenue still exists within the existing or any future changes.
No, there's still a board for the grievance process.
So, that would be separate from the assessors?
Yeah, there's a board of assessment review that would hear the grievances in May.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
And the single person would take the place of the three people, just so you know. That's all. Yes?
Thank you for the opportunity. I, oh, my name is William McGann, 113 Montgomery Street. On the board of assessors, was elected six years ago, re-elected two years ago. I'm state-certified, completed all the requirements to be state-certified. There's two things I want to make the board aware of. Recently, back on April 1st, one of our experienced assessors was taken seriously ill. He had a long bout of cancer, and we honored him last Friday night. And in his absence, we had Chairman of the Board, Emory Ruger, myself, and we have a very capable staff. Donna Van Boris is the Assessor Clerk. We had a very effective, open book. The public was served well. And then, at Grieven's Day, we were available to the board of assessment review. There were no hitches, everything went very smoothly, and it gave us depth. People may not be aware that Emory Ruger has 28 years' experience. Jack O'Brien had 23, and I have six. We work very well together, and we actively recruited Charlie Wiles. He has an excellent background in construction. He's a graduate of Culverskill. He's been living in this area at least 30 years, so he knows the roads very well. And it's important that we have, it's not a conflict of interest, these men work in Rhinebeck and they work out of town as well, that they have the knowledge to analyze property and a home, and what it costs to build one. So, we have, and we don't make a one-man decision. We have three minds, three sets of eyes to view any piece of property. That's an important point. Another point is, I'm just reiterating what the mayor said, we are elected by the people. If, for some reason, and I was personally challenged two years ago, won by a very slim margin, but this is a democracy, and you can run against anyone who's holding office, as the board members know. So, I just want to stress that point, that Charlie Wiles is very experienced, he's going to work well with the board. And that's important, that we have harmonious collaboration on the board. And I know from personal experience, talking to other assessors that are appointed during my training up at Cornell and up in Albany, there is a certain element of political pressure when you have one person appointed by the board. I'm not saying there's any temptation here, but I had an experience talking to a gentleman that was newly appointed, and he brought it out, that former, longtime residents would come in with some political clout, and he's appointed, and he has a house and a couple of kids, so what is he supposed to do? I just bring that out, I'm not accusing anybody here of any deceitful or criminal acts or anything like that, but it is a point to have a certain independence when you're elected. And I want to make that known, you know, to the board. Again, as far as training goes, you might say, well, we have a new assessor, what is it going to cost to train him? Well, right now, it used to be, you went up to Cornell, you went up to Albany, and you had to take classroom classes. I took three out of the seven that were required. The rest I did at home study, so it didn't cost the town, you know. We saved some money. Now, with computer technology as it is, you can learn online, you don't have to go up to Albany, you don't have to go to Cornell, you can. It is a good experience to go to Cornell, by the way. It's amazing. You stay in a motel, but you're intermingling with assessors all over the state, sharing problems, solving problems. So, it is worthwhile to go up there for a week. But on the other courses, you can go online, or you can do self-study, so you don't really cost the town significant amount of money, so I just want to bring that out. I thank you for your time, and...
Thanks, man.
Hi, it's Howard Crossley, the municipal Rhinebeck. What Mayor Jim said, but additionally, I also wanted to make sure that when you resume your public hearing after today, that you do that after January 1st.
I mean, we're not going to close the public hearing yet.
No, I mean, I would like you to resume it after January, of course, if it's possible.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Gaspreen. I'm of 102 Old Albany Close Road in Rhinebeck, New York. I'd like to just echo the sentiments of Mayor James Reardon and our assessors. Coming from that background, I was an elected official in Green County. Karen Carroll was the assessor for three years. We had a chairman and two co-assessors, so I'm very much aware of the property evaluation. I think everyone appreciates how important it is to have adequately trained and dedicated individuals that help keep the proper evaluation on properties, which derives the taxation in the base, so that municipal government can function and operate properly. It baffles me as to what the motivation is. I would like to hear it. I think having three individuals, naturally, they would work together, but there would be redundancy in continuing the effort and ongoing property evaluation before taxable status day. You bring it down to one individual, you can obviously make it a full-time position with benefits. We all understand the 2% cap and the ramifications of operating government under those limitations are. So, I'm very much concerned. I would like to understand what the motivation is, so maybe spell that out to me and make some common sense out of it, I'd appreciate it. But I've lived here since 1992, I've worked in this community since 1978. I think the three assessors and the previous assessors that served the town did so with distinction and with dedication, and I just hope that the board would reconsider this sole assessor position. Thank you very much.
Any further public comments? Public hearing comments?
Hello, Howie Trout, Village of Rhinebeck, board trustee. The one point I always want to expand on what Anthony had said, the benefits. If you have a full-time assessor, those are going to have benefits, retirement, health...
I don't know.
Okay, well, as you know, you just went over your budget, and employee benefits are one thing that are uncontrollable. The village spends $477,000 a year on total employee benefits. That's 20% of our total budget. Everybody asks me, what do I get for paying my village taxes? Well, that's one of the 20%, right there, and that's uncontrollable. Just for an example, the state retirement fund, the year before this year, we put $85,000 in, this year we had to put $120,000 in. And the state tells us that, we have no control over that. Just one example of the employee benefits. So, I just want you to think about that, that that's... And I know, you spend months going over the budget. We do, you do, and that's just, would add to the one more uncontrollable expense. Thank you.
If you guys just came in, we're receiving comments, public comments on the hearing for the local law number to be assigned for 2013 to establish the office of a single-appointed assessor pursuant to real property tax law, section 328. So, public comments are open.
I'm Michael Gi, Oak Street, Rhinebeck. I just learned this through the mayor's email today, and I haven't seen anything in the papers, not that maybe he's been doing it, but just getting the feeling it's kind of being rushed, and I would caution on that kind of quickness. The community really needs to know the rationales behind and be able to weigh all of the thoughts. And being a longtime resident of this area, the towns of Highland, town of Kipstein, and town of Hyde Park had to send a appointed assessor many years ago, who ended up being involved in some criminal activity, and the FBI found his body in the Hudson River. So, we don't need that when we have three things that seem to be working. So, you need to really justify that, because there is a historical, you know, situation in this county where it didn't work. So, please, the community know why you're doing this, so we can weigh, because we did vote for people. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, we're not going to close the public hearing on this. We're going to maintain it open at least till next meeting, or hopefully... Who made the comment about till next year? Is that Hines, I think? Okay, so, hopefully, we can have more public comments on this and some more input on it, so. Mayor, go ahead.
I think what his intent was with that request to go to January is because of the holiday season, you know, things get very hectic, and for people to make it to public meetings, public hearings may be difficult, so his request, I believe, was based on the fact that he thought it might be more prudent to have a meeting following the holidays.
Thank you. I'd like to also hear from Emory. Emory's not here, of course, and he's not able to come here, so I certainly would like to wait to hear what he has to say about it. He's our lead assessor, so. Anyways, at this point, we'll just move on with the evening's agenda. The public comment period will remain open till next meeting, at least, maybe till next year, and thanks for your comments. All right. No presentations tonight, any liaison reports?
The only thing I have is, we have tons and tons of garbage bags from the old transfer station. We're not going to use, we're starting using them internally now.
Anything for you, John?
Let me just talk a little bit about the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee. We have been discussing density bonus, and we initially presented a plan which would call for a 30% density bonus. We had Ted to build out analysis as to what that would actually mean in the context of what we were talking about. And the 30% density bonus would be about 260 possible additional units. After the committee got that, it asked Ted to consider what the density would be if we cut it to a 15% density bonus, and it comes out to about 132 units. Ted is finishing his report, and will circulate that report. The committee believes that the 15% density bonus would be more appropriate with the aim of having affordable housing, raising the funds to do that, together with this twin aim, which is to foster open space. So, that will be coming shortly.
Let me just, John, do we have the minutes from the adoption of the budget on here, or no?
No.
We don't? Okay. All right. Okay. All right. I don't have any liaison reports, however, as the chairman of the board, I want to get some approval to have our newly-elected public official, Elaine Fernandez, to attend the Association of Towns seminar in January. So, if the board would agree and approve the finance to send her to that seminar, January 14th, I believe it is, 14th and 15th, or... Standby. You got that?
It's been done.
It's been done? Okay, no approval needed? All right, never mind, disregard. You're already set, Elaine.
But she's going.
She's going. All right, onto business. Resolution approving abstract 11B vouchers V-1119 through V-1161. Thirty-three checks for the amount of $53,678.12. A motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item two is resolution approving the preliminary capital project for 2013, abstract 11, checks for $17,405.24. Motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item number three is a resolution approving the budget transfer amendments. That's your tab number three. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's so moved. Item four is a resolution approving the employee stipend. A motion and a second?
Motion. Target? Let me just mention that this was for extra service for this employee who really pitched in when we had a vacancy and worked many additional hours and kept that function going while we were seeking a replacement. That's why we're doing it.
This is for a deputy clerk who actually acted beyond her job description and duties, and it was to compensate her for those services. Motion and second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item five is a resolution approving the public display of fireworks for the fine estate, and we do this every year for their New Year's celebration, as long as we have got the confirmation that the neighbors were notified, so on, the fire departments and everything that's required.
They look very beautiful from my bay window.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
Will be over. Are you inviting us over there? So, everybody's invited to the mayor's place, and... Motion and second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item six is a motion to authorize the sale of the highway equipment.
Motion.
Second.
Kathy, you want to discuss this?
I have submitted to the board a memo with the full list of bids that we see on the pieces of highway equipment that we put out for a bidding, and also a memo of information recommending the bids that we accept, which in each case is the highest bid. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pieces of equipment that we put out for bid, three trucks, and various small items of equipment. The total revenue, if you accept these bids tonight, will be $23,996 for credit to the capital equipment project. Are there any, do you have any questions, or I think everything was detailed in the information I submitted?
Any questions? Do we, motion and second on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item eight is a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, item seven is a motion authorizing the accounting entries for...
It's the movement of the money into the loan into the sewer capital fund thing.
That's for the grant for the Rhinebeck thing, the water thing?
Yes. It's a loan out of the part town fund. We already had the capital fund created a couple years ago.
This is just to move the money, right?
Yeah, loan the money.
Loan the money.
Okay, a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Before we do that, just some discussion, huh?
Yep.
I think when we loan money from one fund to something else, there's an interest charge. I think we charged Ben Burcove, so I think we should, as part of this, put in the interest rate. Am I correct, Bruce, that at Ben Burcove, there was always an interest?
Just before my time, I believed that it had been waived at one point.
Well, let's...
Normally, if you're not going to pay it back by the end of the year, you're supposed to pay it back by the end of the year, and you're supposed to pay interest. So, I think we should modi- So, I think we should modify this and add 2%.
Okay. I agree. I don't think it will be paid back. We can always waive it in the future, depending on what would happen. But I think the resolution should call for 2% interest. So, if we can still modify, we can vote on it as modified.
So, let me just get this straight. This is just loaning from the Part Town Fund to a capital line for the Rhine Cliff Drainage Project?
Right.
And until we get a grant that would pay that fund back, is the idea there?
Yes.
The amendment would be 2% of that $4,000. $4,000 is what we're talking about. Okay. So, is a motion and second for that?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's so moved. Item eight is a resolution approving the town hall use applications by the Hudson Valley Garden Association. Motion and second?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's so moved. Item nine is a resolution approving the proposed engineering services for Erdman Anthony.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, discussion?
I just want to comment, we're using the professional exclusion for this?
Yes.
So, and I believe we should cap this very soon. You know, if this goes on, I don't... Because we've gotten burned by that in the past. I don't want to do that. We didn't go through a curement. So, I would, you know, approve it, but I think we have to come back and visit it if we're going to spend a lot of money here.
Right. This is a contract for $2,500.
Well, it's...
Now, let me just finish, Bruce. The reason we hadn't really thought about going out to bid on it was there's a really short time deadline. We were told that we needed to put something in to get to a possible grant, and the next step is mid-December. So, that we've entered into a contract with the grant writer for the first step, which would be $4,000, and this would be $2,500. So, we're not talking about huge amounts. If, as this thing progresses, and we're in the running for a multimillion-dollar grant, then I think we can consider what additional steps we should take before we retain a professional to help us.
Okay. If you read it, it's more than $2,500. It specifies what it's going to charge for additional if needed.
Right.
This is open-ended.
Right.
So, I just want to be sure that this is it, and it's not extended beyond this submission.
Let's put it in... Let's amend it to no more than $2,500.
Okay.
Would that be the... Good?
But what if she needs 26?
Then we'll modify it with the board.
It goes both ways. It's $2,500, possibly more, or possibly less. It's based on time, and she estimates, I think, a day and a half of time plus another... You know, I don't think we're really talking about a lot of money. If you're really uncomfortable, why don't you make it $3,000? So, there's a little bit of wiggle.
No, no. I'll make it $2,500, and if they need more, then we'll modify it then. I'm fine with that.
But the problem is, we meet every two weeks, and if this is time-sensitive, which we are led to believe that it is, what, are we going to have an emergency meeting?
Why not? All right. Fine, we'll put in some contingency of $500 bucks.
Okay. That's what I would recommend.
But I just want to... We've gotten... We've gone down the...
We've gotten away from what we were practicing before, is what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Weren't we? We were talking about the two-hour thing that they were so critical about when Geller and Klein was here, and now we're just kind of open-ended in some of these contracts. So, let's put an end on some of these, and the contractors come back to us and ask for more money if they need it, and we approve it or not. I would... If you want to make it $3,000, make it something.
I make it $3,000.
Up to $3,000.
Up to $3,000. Still signing the contract for the $2,500, and we should add something saying, but no event shall be more than $3,000.
So, amend the resolution to state that at $2,500 with a contingency of $500, or in other words, no more than $3,000. And that's the motion. The motion is second on that?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Mayor, any comments?
Could I just ask what the grant is for?
Grant is for a Hurricane Sandy relief fund. It's for... It's to help out with a stormwater sewer, stormwater, wastewater grant possibilities for the Rhine Cliff area.
Thank you.
Yeah. All in favor, aye? Opposed? It might be something you might be wanting to look into, Jim, with the dams, you know? I don't know if you've heard about these.
Do we have some money that we applied to the...
Apparently, there's some...
We did that.
Yeah, okay. Apparently, it's... I don't know. It seems like it's something new, according to what I'm hearing, so...
We had done once a mill, which we received payment for, and we didn't notice a mill. We still have some more requirements to meet.
Okay. All right. Item 10 is a resolution approving the winter rec basketball hires.
Motion.
Second. All in... Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Have any discussion items on the board?
I got one more resolution we need.
You do?
Sorry. We need to create a new line item, a new line item in the budget for income from the school adult education. So, will I make a motion to do that and direct the bookkeeper to do so?
Sure. A motion and second to approve a line item budget for the adult...
Revenue.
For the revenue for the adult winter rec. This is for the basketball and volleyball.
Yeah.
So, a motion and second. I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's so moved. Any further discussion items? Any public comments?
Comment, let me just mention, in connection with the assessors, I think before the next meeting, we should explain our rationale that, you know, this is something you can talk about on the last year. So, this is not a sudden thing. And maybe the various board members may want to elaborate, and we're missing two of our members. But I don't want people to go away and think that this hasn't been thought out. At least where I'm coming from and thinking about it is that we understand that there are more rigorous educational requirements for one assessor than for three assessors, and that everybody, or all municipalities in Dutchess County, except Rhinebeck and one other, have moved from three to one. The state has passed legislation to facilitate that switch, which I take as legislative encouragement to do it. In addition, we... I think it will be somewhat cost savings. I don't think necessarily we're thinking of a full-time position for those who are scared about the cost. But I think other board members should state where we're coming from, so you have a better explanation.
Okay. Fill me up.
To address Mr. Gelb's comments on, when you get state certification, you cover all the basic courses. That's the foundation of any, whether you're a board of assessors, appoint assessor, elected assessor. There aren't greater requirements. There are elective requirements, like cell tower. You have to get more credits when you're appointed, granted. But I think we have a unique situation here. The towns of Mylar and Clinton and Rhinebeck have boards of assessors, but basically in a less populated area. I'll give you another example. I was chatting... She's a Rhinebeck resident, by the way, but she had 16 years with the Office of Real Property Services as the Ulster County Liaison. I'm not going to mention her name, just giving you an example. She left that job because the state is contracting their offices, going from Newburgh, closing that office, and enlarging or moving, merging with the White Plains office. She has a son who's in elementary school here. She elected to shop around. She's an instructor up in Albany for some of these required courses. Interestingly enough, I asked her, I said, she said, "I'm appointed for six years, I'm getting medical insurance." The town of Lloyd, I think, has about 10,000 to 11,000 people. I, off the top of my head, out of my 40 years up in the Hudson Valley, town of Lloyd, size-wise, is kind of equivalent to Rhinebeck, the town and village of Rhinebeck. However, I think we have more viable commercial property on Route 9 here in the village, and we have about almost the same number of parcels. Now, if a lady with a family, with a son, she may be... I don't know if she's applying wage on her, but she has to pay her son to school to pick him up. She's getting a nice package. By the way, she signed a six-year contract. It wasn't just a, you know... And she made a move, a career move. And assessors are not, you know, just don't pluck them off the tree. A lot of people are not going into that field. But you have a unique situation here where you have two established assessors, and we have one that's going to be trained, and he has the background to easily absorb it. I doubt very much if you get a so-called temporary appointment, most of the assessors that I know have full-time positions in the towns that direct. So, if you're going to get someone part-time, I'm just giving you an example. Town of Lloyd has 10,000, 11,000 people.
Let me... I don't want to... I mean, I want you to make your comments, but we're short two board members who support this, and I think it'd be better served if you saved your comments for then, when... I mean, I'm not... I want to hear these, but I want you to...
I also questioned why I even said the first sentence.
Let me... Let me... You really... I mean, respectfully, I just want you to say these with the full board members here who support this.
Yeah. I'm also interested, the two people that motion was made by and seconded by are not here tonight, and this is a hearing.
Well, they'll be here. They'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. So, any public comments for anything in the community? Okay. Mr. Gelb? Not related to Mr. Gelb.
Dave Gelb, I live in the city of Mulberry Street, and room was nice and clean. I cleaned the room last night.
Nice.
We had the... I just wanted to say big thank you to the board, even though almost half the board is not here. They... Board let us use this venue last night for... Yesterday, at the craft fair, supporting Sintifaus, and just a big giant thank you. We had 642 people came to our craft fair yesterday. We sold close to $1,000 worth of stars. We had a table charge, we raised quite a bit of money. I don't have the exact figures with me. I didn't know I'd have an opportunity to say thank you. And that's all I got. Good money and a good show.
Well, let me say thank you to volunteering for all these things that you do. I know that you do more than just what you see up here. Thank you.
I came in last night around 7:00 to do bills, and very pleasantly surprised the room was set up like this. It was clean, it was great. I thought, since I had been early in the morning that day at your craft fair, that the room would be a mess, but it was spotless. So, I thank you and the group that you work with in cleaning up the room.
All right. Great. All right. So, there's no other further comments? Will motion and second to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
And all in favor, aye? Aye? So moved. Thank you very much.